Tell me.
I have too much fun up here.
Good evening. I have 5:30, so we're going to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order. Remind you to turn your phones silent or vibrate, and then let's please stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christine, would you go ahead and take the role, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda, minutes from regular meeting number 37 on December 1st, 2020 as presented. Approve the appointment of Travis Brown to the position of operator in the water pollution control facility effective December 21st, 2020. Approve the annual urban renewal report for the Westgate Urban Renewal Area, Airport Urban Renewal Area, Wildwood Drive Highway 34 Urban Renewal Area, and the Hospital District Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor Urban Renewal Area for the fiscal year of July 2020 through June 2021 for the city of Atumwa, Iowa, updated with report and letters to auditor. Approve the purchase of two in-car camera systems from Safe Fleet Mobile Vision Incorporated for the Police Department for $11,359. Approve participation in the Iowa Department of Transportation's paint program to purchase paint for the Traffic Maintenance Department for the 2020-21 fiscal year with an estimated total of $10,106.96. Set January 5th, 2021 as the date for a public hearing on the plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the Marion Street reconstruction project. Set January 5th, 2021 as the date for a public hearing on the plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility effluent diffuser project. Resolution number 248, 2020, setting January 19th, 2021 as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 111 North Clay. Resolution number 253, 2020, approving the fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 capital improvement projects. Resolution number 259, 2020, setting January 5th, 2021 as the date of a public hearing to approve plan specifications in form of contract for the Apron Improvements Project at the Atumwa Regional Airport. Beer and/or liquor applications for Reds Pub LLC at 618 Church Street, Tequila Grill at 112 North Market Street. All applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
All right. I'll need a motion for approval of tonight's agenda. Is there such a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Administerors report, so I turn to Phil Rath and ask Phil, make your comments.
Okay. I just wanted to make a brief couple of comments. The first one is in regards to the garbage service. Let me slide this out for a second. Received notification earlier today that with the holidays coming up, the Friday pickup will be moving to Thursday, and that is not this week, so that'll be the week of Christmas and the week of New Year's. So for those two weeks, it'll move from Friday to Thursday. Residents reminded to put their trash, if their collection day is Friday, out on the Thursday. And then also, if there's any bulky items, the Tuesdays and Thursdays will be picked up on Tuesday. So we'll also be putting out a press release and updates on our Facebook and website as well, but just to make notice of that in the public meeting as well. So if you get any calls, the Friday collections will move to Thursday. Okay. Second thing was, I just wanted to let council know that we are working as staff on action items coming out of the strategic planning session we had about a month ago. And there was a number of items that came out of that executive summary that was approved. And on our Thursday strategic meetings with staff, we're coming up with some suggestions for an action plan to start to meet what we have in there. One of those things that's identified that we've kind of been working on a little bit with the priority-based budgeting, which we'll talk a little bit under the next coming items, but also the capital planning, multi-year budgeting, all of those things are a piece of this. And with a couple of the items that are on tonight's agenda, I just wanted to let Kayla make a brief presentation or explain a couple of things with what we can expect to see later tonight. So if that's okay, have the Director of Finance?
Sure. Go ahead, Kayla.
So I just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates on kind of where we're at with our tax levy. The first couple of columns, that column B and C, that is our current year, fiscal year '21 property tax levy. And if you see what all of our rates off over there are off to the side there, our total tax rate for this fiscal year is 22.4565. And we've been making headway and concentrating on how we can lower those taxes for our citizens. When I was hired, that was one of the main goals that council had shared. And of course, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to come and work for the city was to see how we can make some good strides towards lowering our total tax rate. So some of those changes that will be made that we're proposing for our fiscal year '22 is we will no longer have a transit tax levy, so we will not be requesting any funds for that levy. That will be at zero as we work towards some of our other goals that will help us out. Now, if you look down here towards the bottom left, that affects our outside levy. So our regular general fund levy will stay at that 8.10. And for our citizens, that is the max amount that our general fund tax levy can be at. And then again, that outside tax levy will be at that .975. And that includes the civic center, the liability and property tax, the support for our public library. Those are the three tax levies that make up that outside levy. And then the next one on there is that emergency levy. And we've been about that .21 rate, but with the capacity of moving that up to the maximum at that .27, that will give us some general fund relief to raise that up for that maximum amount. And then if you get down to the highlighted yellow ones there and the highlighted yellow at the bottom, those three go into that employee benefits. And then that debt service levy is kind of what we will be affecting tonight. So at this point, with the debt service at the capacity that we would need to fund tonight's issuances, we would still be dropping our total tax rate by just over 20 cents. Now, I have those three highlighted because we are not finished with those three levies yet. We know at this point that those three levies are not going to go up, but we just don't know how much we can drop those at that, at this point. And we're still analyzing our amount that we'll need for the police and fire retirement. As you know, those police and fire retirements amount are going to be reduced because we have laid off some of those staff members and/or those positions haven't been filled. So we believe that we have some capacity there to lower that tax. Also, the FICAN and IFRS currently were trending below that amount that we need, so we may be able to lower that tax levy. I have already lowered the other employee benefits levy by almost, well, it's been lowered by about $500,000. And the reason why we lowered that by $500,000 was because we went out for bid for our post-65 retiree insurance. And we know that that's going to be a cost savings on next fiscal year of over $500,000. So once we get our information in, probably in the January, February timeframe for our other rates for our insurance and for our retirements, we'll be able to come back to you during the budget process and share with you how much further we can lower our tax levy. So again, I just wanted to share that with you before we talk about these public hearings tonight with the debt service and what our capacity is. Again, right now, we're going to lower the tax rate by about 20 cents. Do you guys have any questions for me or any further clarification on there?
I got a quick comment, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
First, I want to start out by appreciating Kayla for the work she's done and taking council's directives seriously. I appreciate your openness and your transparency, you know, not only during the CIP process, but next year's budget. So that's been really refreshing. And one thing we haven't been able to really nail down due to our situation here in our community is give, you know, the citizens a good look at, you know, directing and trending our taxes down. They've always seemed to creep up and creep up. And, you know, it's been a long journey. I mean, everything from, you know, reallocating our transit services, dropping that levy down, looking at employee benefits, which blows my mind that that wasn't done beforehand, but thanks to you and your leadership have got that done. The painful cuts that we had to endure last year during that budget cycle. So hats off to you for doing all that. And it looks like we're trending in the right direction. We've, I think I can speak for most of us, say we're really impressed with some of the things you found that have been occurring over the years and reverse those. And like I said last time, I'm really excited about where this administration, you know, with Phil's leadership and some new people in place is going. So it's nice to see that trending down. I appreciate your hard work and we'll be excited to what you have for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dalby.
If I could add to that, you know, hopefully we see over the next couple of years, especially as we have the latitude with contracts coming up to drop some of that down even further. I know that's conversation that we've been having for the last couple of years now to see like the employee benefits and things like that going down. But I was a little bit encouraged tonight prior to the meeting. We, one of the other council people and the mayor and I sat down and we were talking about the debt service that we have going forward, even after adding the bond issues that we have tonight on to what our current load is. We're going to be less than what we were in the last fiscal cycle. So that's encouraging as well. We're going in the right direction. We have a lot of capacity left. So I think that that's important for the taxpayers to know as well, you know, that we do have a lot of room for movement going forward. I know this is a question that I had asked during the last council meeting, what our capacity was at. And it's nice to know that we have all that room and the fact that we're able to bring those taxes down because that's, you know, obviously been one of the charges that we've had for years now. We got a really high tax rate. We need to figure out inventive ways to bring it back down. We're not getting the growth in the community that we, you know, that we would need to actually spread that risk out. So we've got to get a little bit more inventive. And we all know that the expenses aren't going down and the revenues aren't going up, so we need to figure out good ways to do that. And I think that, just to echo Councilman Dalby's words, you know, I think we have the right staff in place finally that we can look at the ways that we need to look at them so we can make those tough decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. And yeah, just to reiterate the capacity. So our bond capacity for general obligation is just over 51 million. So it's 5% of our total valuations. And at the end of last fiscal year, we were around 17 million. We have debt that will be falling off this year, you know, that we're refinancing also, and we're also paying some off. So yeah, I mean, you're exactly right. We have a ton of capacity that we can do some great projects with.
And, you know, just for future generation of council people, hopefully we don't get in a position where we have to make more use of that and get us up into that 40%, 50% range of capacity.
Kayla, also, CIP's been mentioned, and while I agree with both the previous councilmen, just a couple of questions, just real quick. For instance, some of the material you sent us, which is CIP 2021-2022, so parks, for example, it says 700,000, but it doesn't really, one of the specific ones, I was curious, I know we were looking at the potential of a shelter. So...
So two of the major projects for the Parks Department is a shower house, which includes, you know, other things within that campground area as well, not just a shower house. It's some paving, some, you know, paved.
Camp sites.
Camp sites, you know, those kinds of things.
Right.
And then completing some other, like filling in the pond and completing some of those.
So is it, would it be asking too much to see a further breakdown in the future of what those, for all categories, what it would be, or is that just asking too much?
No, I mean, I think all of the, some of those projects have already been, have already been brought to council for approval, all of those ones on the FY '21. And then some of the, for FY '22, they will be brought to council per individual project for you guys to approve.
Example, though, I'm trying to think what one was for police and fire. And now in this, it doesn't delineate what it is. And you're right, I remember us talking about vehicles for police. I remember us talking about a fire truck. But did we ever come down to what a ballpark figure is for that fire truck and things like that?
Right, yes. I mean, on the, again, on those police vehicles, those were already approved through the fleet committee for FY '21.
Right.
And so we have already taken possession of those three vehicles under FY '21. We're just giving some, the general fund some relief with doing this bonding issuance. And so the, on FY '22, right, you, well, you've, I don't know if you've received the entire fleet approval from our fleet meeting, I don't know. But yeah, that entire fleet will come to you guys for approval, which yes, includes multiple vehicles and a fire truck and I think four police vehicles, cruising cruiser vehicles, that kind of stuff.
Well, I agree with the other councilmen. I think, wow, you've come, we've come a long way with your leadership and what you've done. But, and then sometimes, maybe we ask for too much. So thank you for what you've done. Kayla, I think it's important for the public, too, that it's awfully hard to see these small figures here, but when you look at our tax levy, 22-25 is what's being proposed. And then you look at the right-hand side, when you look at the other cities we call comparable cities, we're still a couple of dollars higher than most. And I think if you can't read it at home, Fort Dodge is 20.17, Burlington is 16.33, Clinton is 15.69, Muscatine is 15.67, Marshalltown is 15.38, Mason City is 14.38. So we're moving in the right direction.
Yes.
But that gives us something to aim for and to look at when we compare it to other cities of comparable size. So good job, good job.
Kayla, oh.
Yes.
Knowing that, you know, we're obviously have a lofty set of goals and always wanting to try to improve things for the quality of life, which also improves our economic development initiatives as well. But knowing that interest rates are where they're at right now, it seems like it's more cost-effective to build this on, on this front end, as opposed to try to spread it out over four or five years as interest rates will probably go up in the next several years.
Yes. That's exactly right. And, I mean, I'll be sharing with one of the refinancings that we're doing tonight. It was at 4% when we bonded for it. And we believe they'll be around 2% or a little bit above to refinance and for these issuances as well.
Thank you.
Kayla, I got just a quick question this time.
Yeah.
Just, excuse me, maybe for the public, kind of go over the strategy here. It seems to me that the trust and agency levy, which seems to be a levy that we don't even compare to other communities, not even close to other communities, that's a standalone reduction, I believe, you know, you found this year and hadn't been brought to council to go with, you know, a different provider for retirees. But wasn't the strategy basically on the transit levy when, you know, we found out and, you know, we kind of handed that off to 1015 that that levy would be disappearing? However, you know, seeing that we're behind projects in some areas, your strategy was to, you know, reduce the transit levy. And although we can't use transit levy money for any other purpose, when you reduce that levy, you can prop up the other levy where we're deficient and still offer tax relief to the community and the taxpayer. That's a strategy that I would support, because you get everything you need, plus you can get, you know, caught up on the things that are severely deteriorating in the community, parks being one of them. And so I think that's just a great package deal for everybody. So I, again, appreciate your work, and I just wanted to make sure that that strategy was correct.
Yes.
And it's a great one, I think, in that I'd add. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Kayla or Phil?
Nope. I just, I know there was some misinformation out in the community that we were raising taxes as a result of this bonding, and that was not our goal as staff. We were, and directed by council, was to try to lower that tax levy, which we are doing. And you hit that right on the head. For a number of years, there were capital projects that were deferred or delayed, and we're trying to catch up a little bit on some of those, whether it's street projects or vehicles, other equipment we need. So, yep. All right. And that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. That summary of the capital projects you did include in our packet, so we have that breakout. Good. Okay. Okay, let's move on to item E. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address an issue on the agenda? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sherilyn Westrich, and I am your representative elect for this district, for Waplo County, Atumwa, Eldon Agency, and all the surrounding townships. And I just wanted to step forward tonight just to introduce myself to the council and to all the others. I know most of us have met previously and several times. And I know Holly and I were working with the Atumwa Symphony Orchestra Committee together at some point. So, and I actually met with Kayla and with Phil today. And we had a really great meeting. And as the new guy, I learned a lot about how things are going. And I think that I'm going to be a great voice for you guys in the community. I intend to do a newsletter every week, and a portion of that is going to be dedicated to what progress we're making here. And like you guys alluded to earlier, I think you guys are making great progress, and we're going in the right direction for sure. I think Kayla and Phil are doing a terrific job. We spent some time together today, and they went over what's been going on, which you guys just put up on the wall there. So kudos to you guys. I think, you know, we're definitely making progress in the right direction. And I think we're doing good things here with the council, and I just wanted to thank you guys. And also to say to every single one of you to please reach out to me because I'm going to be your voice in Des Moines. When there are issues that are going to help the safety of our community and help do good things that will help people's lives in this community, I will definitely be your voice and take those issues to Des Moines so that we can work on them together. I would like us to be a team, and I'd like us to take action. And that includes the state level. So thank you for everything you guys are doing here. And please reach out to me with anything you need. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherilyn. And we'd also extend the invitation that if you have any questions that come up at the state level about city business, we have great resources here and all of our department heads and administrative staff. So don't hesitate to contact us. We can give you some information.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that openness. Tom, and I know in the last few days, I definitely reached out to just about everyone here. And I promise not to drive you crazy. I'll go up to Des Moines and leave you guys alone. You're doing a great job. And thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item M.
Establishing the criteria for utilization and priority-based budgeting. Recommendation affirm the criteria identified through the council review meets the priorities for the community.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So you were all asked as council members to rate the number of criteria, and those were both in a, what was defined as community issues or criteria, and governance. And the difference there to those in the public that didn't get to see those, those things that were in community are typically the external services, the things where people can see the programs and services provided by the city and staff. They would be things similar to patrolling the streets, making sure there are good roads, that potholes are filled, that we have, you know, quality park space. And those things are the impacts and the visual stuff that people can determine if they're living in a good community or not. Then you have the other ones, which are the governance. Those are all the things kind of go in the background to help with that. Having a payroll system, human resources department, a lot of the stuff that goes in behind the scenes that people don't necessarily see, but still need to be done to make sure that employees get paid to patrol the streets, to clean up the parks, to do those things. And so the five criteria that were voted on for the community events, and this was in no particular order as I just wrote them down here, was safe community, infrastructure and transportation, healthy, clean, attractive community, economic development, and a desirable quality neighborhoods. And so those are the criteria that were selected or averaged out from your selections. And the company that we're working with says four to six is a good range. If you have fewer than four, it doesn't really help out with the other, the base criteria that are being used to score. And if you do more than six, it gets to be too much. And so that's what they found is that's the sweet spot. And we ended up with five exactly. So that worked out real well. If there aren't any objections with those five, you know, and we approve those, the next step, it was with each of these five, is picking the determining criteria in each of those. So what does it mean to have a safe community? Well, there's a list of eight to 11 different things in each of these that you'll be asked to kind of help select. These are the things, when we say safe community, this is what we mean. And then when staff is taking our services and we're scoring all of those against safe community, that's what we're looking at. You know, it might be that people feel safe in their neighborhoods, you know, they can walk the streets without having to worry about things. Whatever those criteria are, those, that's what you'll be selecting next. The second part then is the governance. And there was a three-way tie for fourth. And so you have an option here. You can take the six, so the top three, and then the tied three, or you could eliminate one or two of those, the three that are tied for fourth place there. The six criteria in governance were sustainable fiscal policies and operations, fiscal responsibility, and I think we heard a little bit tonight that that's why that one was important to all of you, communication, leadership, analysis and long-range planning, innovative technology slash efficient process and continuous improvement. And then the last one is trust, transparency, and accountability. So now this is like in all those internal things that we're doing. If we're doing the accounts payable and receivable, that's how these things are scored. Does it help with building trust, transparency, and accountability? Does the particular task promote leadership or communication, fiscal responsibility? That's how we'll be scoring those things internally. So the three that were tied were the analysis, long-range So the three that were tied were the analysis, long-range planning, high-performing organization slash performance effectiveness, and trust, transparency, and accountability. Is that right down the wrong one? I apologize, the innovative technology should not be on this list on the thing, it should be high-performing organization, performance effectiveness, if you see it on your list there.
Yeah, it's correct on this one.
Yeah. So that would have to be a correction to that. So those are the six there, and again, you can adopt those as is, or if you wanted to make any adjustments to that, you have the list there. Or any other questions I could answer?
I like leaving all six, because I think several of them dovetail of those ones that are in that same place, dovetail together. Being effective and high performance gets into having a plan, a long-range planning of which to make those, so I feel like those kind of all fit together.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, that's just exactly, I was going to say, they're kind of, they're kind of a broader category, but they should, should, if that's carried out, carry the ones underneath of them, it seems like, so I would be in favor of keeping, you know, all six, too.
I would as well.
Is it with making the adjustment to the high performing, then that's on your sheet, the green?
It's right, it's correct on here.
It's correct on here.
Yeah. As, as on here, yeah, okay.
Sounds like we have some consensus, that's good. Okay, any other questions for Phil on this? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes. This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the annexation of certain
lands, 1120 East Pennsylvania to the city of Atumwa, Iowa.
Good evening, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. The septic system in 1120 Pennsylvania had failed, requiring a connection to the city's sewer system. Due to the property being contiguous to the city's corporate boundary, the owners of 1120 East Pennsylvania, Laura and Sean Berry, have agreed to voluntary annexation of the property in order to receive city services. The owners have also waived their right to withdraw within three days of the public hearing, and once again, while I'm here, I'd like to thank City Clerk Chris Reinhardt for guiding this process in conjunction with our attorney to fruition.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone that wants to address this item, now's the time to step forward. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Did we receive any written comment?
I received no objections.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Skip.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 241-2020 approving written application for annexation of certain land, 1120 East Pennsylvania, to the city of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 241-2020.
Is there a motion? The recommendation is presented, Your Honor.
Second. Thank you. Any questions for Kevin?
I have one. Um, when looking at this, obviously, they then become onto the city tax rolls and paying for city services, but do you foresee the extension of those city services being covered by the cost of those rates of which they'll pay in the long term?
Eventually, yes.
What's the, or you?
What's the payout?
Or, you know, I mean, do you feel when it comes time to, you know, fix those services for that extended length, is it going, is it financially, physically sound for the city to take on, take that on, knowing the cost, you know, long-term on that?
Yes, in this case, it very much is, of course, because the adjacency was there and the services were pretty close, and the costs of connecting the services were paid by the owners on that property particularly, so this one is, as they say, a good one. No far extension was required.
Okay.
That's a good question, though, oftentimes it is the case.
So, Mr. Flanagan, wouldn't it also, though, fit that that's a continuation of city limits to the east?
I feel that exactly it is, yes. I think you see for our city, when our, really, when our bypass went in, you know, it's going to guide your development, particularly there in Pennsylvania, where ours already is so very close to where that intersection is, it's almost a logic extension to, to see neighborhood commercial, for instance, maybe, and some, even maybe some C-2 highway commercial out there on that intersection at some point in the future.
Any other questions or comments for Kevin?
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property described as Lot 15 and the east one-half of 14-foot alley adjacent to Lot 15 in Hensy and Hedrick's addition to the city of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa, commonly known as 1033 West Second Street.
This is a public hearing, so again, if there's anyone that wants to address this item, seeing nobody, did we receive any comments?
Did you want Kevin to discuss it at all?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Received no comments on this one. Elliott Oil Company has offered the city $1,113 for a vacant lot at 1033 West Second. The property is adjacent to West Second Street BP Station, which of course they own, and the lot will be transferred by quitclaim deed, and all the costs of conveyance will be paid by the buyer. So we do consider this somewhat of an economic development effort, and we're pleased to be able to work with local property owners and business owners in this manner.
Okay, we need to close the public hearing, so is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 246-2020 accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property described as Lot 15 and the east one-half of 14-foot alley adjacent to Lot 15 in Hensy and Hedrick's addition to the city of Atumwa, Waplo County, Iowa, commonly known as 1033 West Second Street, to the Elliott Oil Company for $1,113. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 246-2020.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Kevin? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
This is a public hearing. Kayla, you have the floor.
Good evening again, mayor and council. This first is a public hearing for, that's required by law for our GO debt, our general obligation debt. We're asking the council to take action for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance not to exceed 6 million on general obligation capital loan notes. The debt will be essential corporate purposes to provide funds to pay costs of equipping the police and fire departments, the acquisition, restoration, and demolition of abandoned, dilapidated, and address buildings, structures, or properties, the construction, reconstruction, and repairing of any street and levy improvements, the acquisition, installation, and repair of sidewalks, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, water service lines, street lighting, and traffic control devices, including the acquisition of any real estate needed for any of the foregoing purposes, and the removal or replacement of dead or diseased trees, the reconstruction, extension, and improvement of the airport, the rehabilitation and improvements of city parks, including facilities, equipment, and improvements commonly found in city parks, and refinancing and refunding of outstanding indebtedness of the city. The principal interest proposed in this loan agreement will be paid from debt service, and also we have some other information up there. So this is, on this first tab, is for this not to exceed 6 million. This loan, we're referring it to as ECP-1. So again, it's going to cover the police vehicles, police department capital, fire department vehicles, their capital, the dilapidated buildings, the greater Atumwa Park, airport building improvement, our sidewalk drop program, the levy, the Eisenhower pedestrian bridge, and then these are our streets that are in there now, but those streets could change for any given reason, if another street is in need of repair, but, and then it also includes any tree trimming that needs to be done during those processes. So again, this total amount is 7 million, just over 7.3 million. The bond hearing is for not to exceed 6 million. We have a street on there, which is Gray Street, so that will go under the TIF district, and I will certify that debt next year under the TIF district or the Urban Renewal Report. Currently, we have some gifts donation and grants totaling of about $450,000 or more. We do have the opportunity for some more grants, whether it be through the DOT or our other parks projects, things of that nature, so we'll be working towards getting some other grants as well to pay for some of these. We do also have some cash on hand. For instance, we had already done an issuance for a levy of 150,000, and none of those funds have been spent, so we have that cash on hand that can go towards that levy project. And there's some other funding that we had done some issuances on that came in under budget, so we do have some cash on hand for that capacity. And then if we need any other funding, then we can, we always have the capability to use the road use in the last funds as well. So if you guys have any other questions for me, I'll take those for this funding, bonding.
Let's do the, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address this? If not, let's close the public hearing, and then we can have the council comment, so.
I received no objections on this item either.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 254-2020 instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed 6 million general obligation capital loan notes. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 254-2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now, any questions for Kayla on any?
I have a couple, I have a couple. So again, just to reiterate a little bit from what was said earlier, these, when these come, do, we'll be voting on these individually.
Yes.
Correct? Because I guess, one of the things that, on line four, fire department vehicles, if I remember correctly, correctly from the last meeting, where we actually spoke about potential costs for that 550, seems like it could be a little bit low.
Well, actually, we have reduced that, the, are you meaning line four for the fire department vehicles?
Yes.
We actually reduced that from 700 to 550,000, because we have received some information about a demo fire truck.
Okay.
And so that would be the cost, it's just under about 550, so we reduced that amount already.
Okay.
Between the last meeting and this meeting.
Good, good. And the other thing that I would question is number 11, the Eisenhower Ped Bridge.
Yes.
That one, that number concerns me just a little bit, that we would be spending that kind of money on a pedestrian bridge. I would like to know, since primarily that that bridge is, seems to be utilized for the schoolchildren and everything, there would be some buy-in from the school district as well on that project, that we wouldn't be footing the entire bill for that, since it's, you know, such a large amount, and it's pretty exclusive to one particular area. That, that seems a little bit large to me.
Yeah, and this is kind of a, more of a recent development as well, so, I mean, we haven't had a lot of time to work on it, or, or talk to the school district or anybody. I don't know, Larry wants to, if you have any comments on what needs to be done? Okay.
I can describe the project, if that's what you want.
No, I, I can understand what the project is, I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned on the cost, that we'd be socializing that much cost for such a unique, unique feature in a community that not a lot of people are using.
And Kayla, I just want to be clear, too, since this is a bonding request, this list will be attached to the final documents and so forth.
Yes.
And as you said, it'll come back to the council on individual items when, when they're brought forth.
Yes, you're right, and some of those, again, like the, some of the police vehicles, those, some of those were already approved with the fleet for FY21. The FY22 fleet will come back to you guys for approval for, for those numbers. So again, some of those projects have already been approved through council, and then other projects will be brought forth to you from those departments.
And for council information, I did talk with our Public Works Director about Pawnee Drive, because that's a rather large item, and, and I think, you know, he gave me a satisfactory answer, but, you know, again, to your point, Mark, it's an area that's not heavily traveled, but it is certainly necessary for truck traffic, and if you've been out on that, it's like we're driving on a washboard right now, it's pretty bad. So again, we'll, we'll be looking at those things individually as they come up.
Your Honor, I got a quick question. I like the list, and definitely having some, you know, capital to put into our parks, which technically our campgrounds is a revenue generating entity itself, I like to see that. I have a question, though. I know that the campground fill-in, or filling in of the pond came up before in another CIP, and I don't think it made it through, and I think the directive there was to kind of go ahead and fill it in as time allowed, and with whatever we can use. Is that something that we could possibly continue doing rather than spend a lot of money to fill it in, or is that, are there other things to that project that we have to spend money on, like environmental regulations or something that I'm not aware of?
You're exactly right. We were going to use local contracts and spoil from projects. I think you've seen, we made quite a bit of progress just from the sewer separation project, as we cut base from under some of these streets. You'll see as much next year off of Main Street, probably slightly more, as we rebuild all those streets. So in the next couple of years, you'll see the significant amount of that fill put in. As far as environmentally, I mean, all the material coming out, if we run into what's called hot soil around any stations, of course, we wouldn't put it there, we'd be obligated to take that and properly dispose of it, either through a farming technique or landfill application.
Well, that's what I thought, and I'm not, like I said, you know, there's other upgrades, I think, that also need to be, you know, looked at in the park, like, you know, maybe developing another area for, for revenue streams, for full hookups, those types of things. And I know this is just tonight, just, you know, proving the lump sum of giving this flexibility to do what we want to do later when the details come out, but that's just a suggestion I've had for a while, that if there's other more meaningful revenue generating projects we can do, you know, that'd be something I'd be willing to, you know, maybe reallocate those funds to, instead of doing the pond fill, because it seems like, like Larry said, it's been going pretty good, and I've been seeing a lot of improvement filling that in. Just, just a suggestion, it's not anything.
Yeah, and I think on the pond, you know, as you can tell, there's already been a lot happening, and it will continue to happen, and I think that's why the price has been significantly reduced from where it was when it came last time.
About a quarter million before, I remember that.
Right, and I think that the thought about that is, you know, from the comp plan, and, you know, from outside, you know, organizations, you know, they're wanting to get some stuff done, I think, at the, at the greater Atumwa Park, and the thought is, is if that pond is done, and some of these other things are done, then some of those projects that the outside organizations are wanting to do can get done.
Oh, I totally understand that, I just, you know, when we're looking at the budget and being, you know, fiscally responsible, again, I certainly understand that, I just, you know, I think it's important that we invest revenue in things that generate it, you know, first, as a priority, maybe, and that's something we can talk about later, but that, but the list, you know, in general, looks good, and I'm glad we're able to do a few more things this year due to the, due to the levy, you know, manipulations and stuff that work out good for everybody in the city, so thank you again.
So Kayla, if I could go back a second, when I brought up my questions in the consent agenda about the CIP, it kind of fits right into this. When the fire truck was brought to us before, it was mentioned at somewhere around 750,000, and so to see the 500,000 is great, I guess also a demo, but what you guys will look at, I'm sure, is, does that demo still have bells and whistles that we don't really need in a fire truck, that type of thing? And then I also understood, but I guess I just didn't ask you, but those are all basically estimates, and as you bring them back to us individually, there could be a firmer number, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes. We'll, we'll do the proper bid processes, or if it needs to have an RFP, we'll do those proper processes as well. proper processes as well. But, right, the whole bid process and everything will come back then for, for final approval.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
We're taking a moment to get that. I think bonding is probably one of the most important things that the city council does, and, and spending taxpayer dollars, so we're glad that we're, we're doing this very prudently, and taking our time to make sure, like, when you refinance bonds, that we're getting the best rate for our money, and keeping the city in a safe, solid financial position. So we appreciate that. Go ahead.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
Okay. Kayla, you're back up.
Okay, so this one is for the GCP2, as our acronyms will help us. This note or bond is issued to provide funds to pay costs of funding projects necessary for the operation of the city or for the health and welfare of citizens, including funding for facade and roof grants, grant matches for economic development and other city projects, and the Healthy Neighbors Program, equipping the Parks Department and improvements and renovations to the Bridgeview Center. And again, this, the principal and interest from this proposed loan agreement will be payable for debt service. So again, this is to not to exceed 700,000, and you can see our total is less than that. But this is to continue our roof and facade grants program, which I believe Kevin or Zach came for that approval already, and, and discussed those programs with you, also with the Healthy Neighbor Program, and equipping the Parks Department. Again, we'll come to you during that bid process and during the fleet approval. The Bridgeview Center, recaucking and maintenance. I believe that this is stuff that, you know, you guys have been made aware of, and we've discussed at council member meetings. And this is to prolong the life of the Bridge Center and, the Bridgeview Center, and what needs to be done at that facility. And then the grant match is for those that basically can come and ask for funds from the city that will, you know, improve economic development and/or give us some capacity to give some of those matches to organizations or people that come and ask us for it.
This is a public hearing. So is there anyone that wants to comment? Step forward and identify yourself, please.
Keith Havens, 2851 Oak Meadow Drive. Good evening, council, mayor, administrator. It's a pleasure to be in a meeting tonight. Sounds like you've got things under control. But for the benefit of the public, I would like to just say clearly that this $6 million is a line of credit, that we haven't decided that we're gonna, how much we're gonna spend on any one item. And so when the bottom line finally comes out, this may be well below $6 million, depending on what we spend. But it's important, as a former council member, to try to be as clear as possible for the public to understand. We're not bonding for $6 million. We're bonding for the capital possibility up to $6 million, and we haven't decided, you haven't decided, how much we're really going to spend for any one item.
And we have to pay it back.
Unfortunately, somebody will call it due. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. We appreciate your interest. If there's no one else, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Matt.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 255, 2020, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed 700,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 255, 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Holly, or Phil, or?
Yes, please.
Not Holly.
Holly, we have a question for you.
Kayla! May I, Kayla?
Yeah.
I just wrote your name, Holly, that's why.
So you mentioned the economic development section, and I know a month or two ago, we had a little bit of discussion here in the council about requests from different entities, whatever, coming for money. But I, I would hope we'll also soon work together to establish a plan, and that plan may well be, I'll just throw it out, may well be, that you need to apply for that money a year ahead or something, as opposed to we get caught by the early one, and then we don't have the funding.
Right.
So I, I hope that will include some planning.
Yes.
Yeah, and if I could just echo what Councilman Myers said, you know, I, I know I've been speaking about this for a long time. I hope that we're very judicious in spending that money, because it seems like every time any group in town hears that we have five bucks extra, they're coming and asking for it. And I know I'm making a little bit of a joke about that, but it is kind of true. And, you know, with only having $60,000, that can get wrapped up in three, in three asks. So I, I would hate to see that gone in the first month of the next budget cycle, and I, I fully agree with what Councilman Myers says, that we, we really need to have some sort of process in place. That way, we have the time to really evaluate, because if we give all of the money away in the first three months, and then something really important comes along in month seven, we've got nothing, because then I'll be asking the same question over again. What are we gonna cut?
Yep.
Your Honor, I, I'd just add my voice to theirs, which probably doesn't need to be added, but the process is the key there, and I'm not a big fan, I really am not a big fan of, you know, bonding for a purpose of handing out money to other organizations for functions. I just have to get that off my chest. But I understand the implications of doing that. And I think Mark talked about the process. If that process doesn't include a way to look at the economic development in monetary, you know, terms, and not just a, well, we do all this for the hotels and this and that, I'd like to see it actually laid out and proven that that's exactly the economic development impact we get, then I have no issue with that. I think sometimes we get wrapped up in, you know, a lot of the opinions about how much we could possibly get. I think it just needs to be really scrutinized very heavily. It's not a big, you know, I have trouble with that one. I understand why we do it, but like Councilman Rowe and Bob Myers said too, we gotta be very judicious with that. And I think setting a limit also on the amounts that any organization can receive, i- if they don't meet that criteria, or do meet that criteria, we should take it on a case-by-case basis. But that is a painful issue, but I, I understand the importance, and I won't have any qualms with those, as long as we do it the right way.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, as we've kind of discussed with this, you know, to prevent Mark from asking his question of what's going to be cut, we wanted to have some capacity. And I mean, and maybe at some point in time, you know, we'll have a bigger capacity for, for these types of matches. But again, it's gonna come back to, you know, what are the goals that you guys set? You know, do they, does it meet those criteria, and, you know, does it fit into what, you know, what we're moving towards, those types of things? And so there's a lot of grant applications out there, and, you know, we can certainly work together in, in trying to, to get that type of application happening, and, and, you know, filtered through Phil's office to you guys, or something of that, that nature.
Kayla, I was just gonna clarify, this isn't just for, this could be used for like Iowa Economic Development Authority grants for matches, for that type of thing, which we've then really seen on those, a quick turnaround to increase evaluations from those, making our money back on that.
Yeah, I mean, over the last year, we've had quite a few people come, you know, to either ask for a match, or our support in, in writing a grant that would, you know, help our citizens or our city move forward, or even just an organization specifically. And, you know, we just haven't had any of those funds available, so I think this is a good start.
And I like seeing, kind of on that same realm, like Councilmember Dalby was saying, things that make more money, or, you know, generate increased revenue, ensuring that we improve our housing stock and our commercial buildings. I think we've seen, you know, 300% return on investments the last few years on several of those projects, so I think that that's something we definitely need to keep doing.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
This is public hearing. So Kayla, you have the floor.
So again, this is another general obligation capital loan. We're referring to this one as GCP3. The note is issued to provide funds to pay the cost of construction, reconstruction, enlargement, improvement, and equipping of City Hall, fire stations, police stations, and swimming pools, and recreational areas, including the Atumwa Beach. The principal and interest will, on the proposed loan agreement, will be payable from debt service. So again, the first line item up here is the beach repairs, and it doesn't seem like much, but again, we just did a very large renovation out there. So our hopes is to continue to put money in here and assess and reassess, so that way we can extend the useful life of the beach. And, you know, just whether it's painting, or, or whatever needs to be done to make it look as nice and as great as it does right now. The additional City Hall equipment and improvements, most of these projects you guys have already approved. For instance, we, you know, went out for an RFP for our phone system, the priority-based budgeting, our Cronos payroll and human capital management, those types of things are, are included in this dollar amount. The entrance doors, City Hall ADA improvement, and City Hall exterior and masonry and roof repairs. Some of this, especially like the entrance doors on the first floor, you know, the paints chipping off, and, you know, all of, it, it, it looks amazing. If you look at like the Fourth Street entrance up here, we had a grant that helped, that helped us redo that, and it had a cash match. And so our hope is, is that on some of these, we can get a grant to redo some of the woodwork, and, and to make it look as nice as like the council chambers do. The ADA and the exterior masonry and roof repairs come from our report that I believe Dwight has shared, and we, Phil and Larry and I have met about. And so we're hoping to get some of those repairs done. We have some significant roof repairs and, that we've been dealing with, and we're, we're really hoping to get those done this, next year, get those fixed.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to address this? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 256, 2020, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed 700,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 256, 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions?
I would just make a final comment after this long section on CIP. Thanks again, Kayla, and even as former Councilmember Kevin has suggested, it's very important that the public see exactly what we're spending our money on. And I don't think, in past CIPs, we've basically been given maybe five or six things that are all encompassing of all the projects blow up, but, you know, your, your layout of all the individual projects that we can, you know, look at and even unfortunately scrutinize is very nice to have. It's very nice for the public to be able to see that too, and so they know exactly how much money we're spending. So thanks again, appreciate it.
Okay. Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 258, 2020, approving the annual budget for the Atumwa Water Works Board of Trustees for calendar year 2021. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 258, 2020.
Move the recommendation as presented. There a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Kayla.
The adoption of this budget is required by state code according to section 384.2 of the Code of Iowa, and will be forwarded along with the approving resolution to our county auditor. And Mike Kepperton is here from Atumwa Water and Hydro, so if you guys have any questions, Mike and I can help you with those.
Would you like to make any comments, Mike?
Sure. I assume, I assume you all received a copy of the cover sheet with the budget highlights on covers of revenue and expenditures, so just kind of recap that. There is a 3% rate increase that goes in effect January 1st, and we're in the process of notifying our customers of that on the December water bills. And as usual, capital projects dominate our budget. We've been spending a lot of money on projects, water mains, our lime residual project is the biggest project we have for next year. So I guess with that, I'll just see if there's any questions.
We appreciate your working with us. I know it's always been a struggle to try to repair your lines and, and our streets, and so we appreciate working with you and helping us to get those timed so we can help each other. So keep, keep doing that, that's been great.
Yep, and the sooner you can get your streets selected to easier, it will be up for us to try to incorporate the water mains into it, so.
Sure. Any other questions for Mike, or Kayla?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other questions in general? If not, we'll take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 260, 2020, assessing 2020 weed mowing charges against certain lots in the city of Atumwa, Iowa, for a total, including administrative fees, of $58,436. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 260, 2020.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendations presented, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The attached report lists 108 properties that were mowed by the city's mowing contractor in 2020. Owners of those properties that were mowed were billed for the mowing charges, and those charges on the attached list remain unpaid. Total charges for mowing assessments for 2020, including administrative fees, would be $58,436, which was listed in your packet. However, the owner of 356 Clarence Street came in today and abated his nuisance costs, so our, our total that will be read into our minutes will be $58,286. Entertaining any questions members may have.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, the money that we don't recoup from this, is that put on, assessed on property taxes, or is that one that we don't do that on?
Yes, it is assessed on property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Resolution number 262, 2020, fixing date to set January 5th, 2021, at 5:30 PM for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 3.5 million general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Atumwa, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes, and providing for publication of notice thereof. ECP4, general obligation capital loan notes of refinancing and refunding certain outstanding indebtedness of the city, including the taxable general obligation bond series 2011 dated October 19th, 2011. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 262, 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. You're back up.
Good evening, once again, and for the final time.
Good evening, once again, and for the final time. Okay, so this is a resolution to set a public hearing for our next meeting of January 5th. This is a refinancing of the GEO bond, the taxable GEO bond, from 2011. This bond issuance was at 4%, and we believe that we can refinance it at a smaller amount. And we believe that we can use our current issuance to combine this ECP four with ECP one. So at the January 5th meeting, we'll have a public hearing for this refinancing, and then at the second meeting in January, then we'll sell all of these for your guys' approval. So that's kind of why we're fixing the date to do this one and combining all of them.
Any questions for Kayla? What do you estimate to be approximate, and I won't hold you to it, but approximate savings by refinancing?
A couple hundred thousand. Yep.
Good. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
I don't see anyone in the audience, and nobody's calling in, so we'll skip down to Kay. Any communications, Phil, from you as city administrator? Kayla?
Sorry. I do have, there was a request from a citizen to take a look at the Main Street project and the accessibility, and wanting to see if the council wanted to have our attorneys look to see if the project was, if there was deficiencies in making sure that the accessibility requirements were met on that project. So it's something I'll put out there, and think about that, and let me know, and if we wanted to spend the resources to look at that. We're getting some other additional information for the party as far as their request, but that was one of the things, was a party of that, to see about bringing that before our city attorney.
Phil, am I understanding you say this is for handicapped issues?
Yes.
Thank you.
Phil, a quick question. Do we, we did a downtown project, did we meet the expectation requirements of the ADA when we did that project?
Well, that would be our perception that we had met all that, or that the design committee and everyone else. The request was, though, to have our attorney or some attorney look at it on the behalf of the city to make sure that those requirements were met. So we'd kind of be looking at work that we had done.
Thank you.
One thing I noticed, and I visited with Larry on this, the handicap spots are not marked where they were. There's no handicap stop marked that I know of, except one, and that's where the buses used to park on Market. But the others, there was one where you buy your license plates, there was one by the furniture store on the corner. We're required to have a certain percentage, I think, regulated by how many parking stalls you have in a particular area. And I think that's a federal regulation, so I don't know why they didn't mark those.
Well, but it does make sense, then, maybe to have our attorneys take a look and make sure we think we're in compliance, so why not have them check and make sure that we are?
Larry would know whether we're in compliance or not.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't an item on the agenda particularly, so we could put it on the next agenda if you'd want. Just quickly, to kind of recap some of the stuff we discussed, we're looking globally at each of our parking lots and the requirements. There's a difference between your city-owned parking lots and on-street parking. The issue goes to van-accessible parking. So we're seeing, because you have to meet each one as an individual and kind of globally, I think we've got our map updated, and then we'll be ready to answer those questions. As far as Main Street, there was two planned, but when we cut back the scope of the project, one of them would have been on Green Street north of Main. That was eliminated because we didn't do the street work. That's something that we can go back and look at. Do we need to add those? The ones by Waplo and the nursing station was added specifically, not so much from a number count, but specific for a business. That's something that we'll have to go back and recapture. I don't think that probably would have been captured in the initial design. And again, you know, you know how parking is, Skip. It kind of changes depending on who is in what location.
Correct.
Okay, we'll further review, and you can report back at a future meeting then. Just for council information, I met this afternoon with the owners of the Hotel Otomo. There've been a lot of rumors, and it was a front-page story in The Courier today about the status of the hotel. They are not closing. They are continuing to operate, but they are looking for a buyer. And so I think in future meetings, we may want to have some discussion about, is there anything the city can do to assist them and help them, and give them a good recommendation for potential purchaser? We had a very frank and open discussion, several people around the table, so be happy to talk more about that with you individually. We postponed a meeting this week. We were going to have a meeting tomorrow with One Otomo. As you recall, that's the school system, city, GOPIP, and I hope county supervisors too. But that got postponed to January, and we'll give you a report of that in January. So last, I'd like to wish all the council and city staff Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and be safe, and let's keep wearing our masks to prevent the spread, and hopefully we'll get through this holiday season and get back to somewhat of a normal life in 2021. Is there anything else for the good of the city? Yes, Mayor, if I may, and if it's appropriate. I just think you just mentioned COVID and so forth, but you could fill in the blanks here, but I heard it from you. So a local business just volunteered, offered to help with the Pfizer, with the fact that coolers had to be certain temperature and stuff. Would you share? Would that be appropriate? The vaccine, you know, that has come out does require some very low temperatures, and we had a local business, and I'll mention it, LED Oil, who have a unused cooler, and they were willing to help the city. And I referred them to the Waplo County Public Health Nursing Office, because they are going to be in charge of the storage and distribution of the vaccine. But again, it's the spirit of help and cooperation from some of our city businesses, and I just thought it was outstanding that LED Oil called and offered to help us do that. So just for public information, you should know that. Anything else?
Your Honor, I got one issue here, I think, just an opinion. I know there's been a lot of talk on social media and some people in the community regarding the Main Street paving project downtown. And, you know, they're presenting it as if, you know, this is a totally unexpected thing, there's mistakes made, the pavers are settling, that type of thing, which, you know, we kind of knew in the beginning. But, you know, according to the grant requirements, we couldn't do basically anything but those. I think it might be important to address that, maybe during a public statement, or maybe report next council meeting about what we plan to do to, you know, keep those in good repair until our grant requirements are up, and what we possibly could do after those requirements to putting something maybe a little more sustainable, or just options in general, because I know it's getting a lot of attention. You know, I know it was an issue before we did the project. It was always a concern through the project that, you know, those would shift and settle and this and that. And although most of us, like myself and Skip, are not a fan of those, we were aware of that, and, you know, we'll have some, I'm sure, ongoing maintenance to those. But I think people need to know that, because, you know, I hate to see a beautiful project like that get, you know, a whole lot of negativity, because it really shouldn't deserve that.
Good hour. I think, good comment, Matt, and I think let's do that in a future meeting after we can have a little bit more time to think about that and look at it, and you can research a little bit, too, from a public works point of view, so. Okay. Last call for any other city business. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
I have 649. Good night, Christine.
Good night. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.